Started my heart.
Didn't get to see a tornado, but I was there.
So what happened with that?
Family.
I just know that they got, I don't know whether it was no basement or I don't know.
I know the husband and wife and the children were visiting her parents. They're at her parents' house.
Yeah, I caught that because I saw the GoFundMe page and they raised it. This was last night eighty thousand dollars already for the family.
And they lost two, two kids, the husband?
Two kids, the dad and her mom.
Oh, God.
And I mean, just wondered what he said.
I just didn't know if there was no basement or they didn't heed the warning or I don't know.
I know they said in Newton the sirens they go off.
Spent forty-five minutes in a high school gym with five hundred other people.
Well, as long as that was going on, there was plenty of warning. I mean, that started unless you weren't watching it TV.
My phone, we get a warning or something, my phone goes off.
Yeah, mine went off.
And not even like with an app, it's just part of like.
Yeah, just part of the emergency alert.
Yeah.
I don't know if you need to turn it off.
Here's what I'm trying to make for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Morning. All right, looking for approval of the agenda. Is there any additions?
If there are, then I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll say.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from Monday, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two.
I thought you read well, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I would second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, first item up on the agenda is Zach with Secondary Roads. Morning, Zach.
Morning. Two different items today. The first two relate to the E nineteen research and project, first one being the plan. So this is to resurface E nineteen from Velvet Avenue to Zephyr Avenue, two miles. This has kind of been on in the works for a while. I believe that out that road is roughly thirty years old, very rough, not a lot of traffic for a paved road, but it's still definitely in need of repair. Milling in a rough approximately an inch off and putting three inches back. If you remember, this is where we also did add some earth shoulders last summer. Do not, we do not plan on paving the shoulder on this one with the flow ADT, but we will have a granular shoulder there that was never there before, so. Any questions on that project? No, we still need to, we still need to add a little bit to that. We'll work on that this, that will be happen this summer, but it could happen before or after this project. It wouldn't be a problem either way.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. We, we might have to, the road definitely be resurfaced. We may not be able to put the full granular shoulder right in that area, but we'll, we'll do that work ourselves if it's not done beforehand, but it's on the, it all depends on when, when we let this and whoever the contractor is, when they decide to come in. If it would be later in the summer, I'm sure we'll have that done ahead of time. If they come in first thing this, this spring, they want to pave it, we may or may not have it done in time for that, but we'll, either way, we'll make you.
And the bids have to be back March thirty-first?
Yep, yep. We'll have, they're gonna be your bid letting. They'll have, have to have it turned in by ten o'clock on the thirty-first. I'll plan on bringing it to the board for you approval the following Monday.
Does anybody have any more questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the plans for the research E nineteen.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Second thing is the notice of bidders for that same project. Basically the same thing we just talked about. We'll use the basically a bid proposal and the contract documents like we do for all of our local projects. Again, the date is March thirty-first, Thursday, March thirty-first of twenty twenty-two at ten AM. Nothing out of the ordinary on requirements for what the bidders need to do, just sort of thing out.
Can hear any more stories about bidding?
Things are going up. I mean, oil's going up. What I've been led to believe is that the sooner you can get it left, the better, but I'm sure things are more now than what they were six months ago, and I guess it's gonna be more six months from now than what they are right now.
Yeah.
The, the best part is, is I believe there's at least one contractor that can get, reach this from where their plant site is, and I believe there's at least one or possibly two others that will have more close enough in the area, so hopefully we can get two or three bids. That's the whole, I guess the whole hope is that we can at least get a couple, so.
When is that bid out?
Uh, March, March thirty-first. If you don't have any questions on the notice of bidders, if you would be so inclined to approve that, that would be great.
Make a motion to approve most bidders for research E nineteen.
I'll second. Been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next thing is gravel. This is the, you expanding using fiscal year twenty-two funds. What we're looking at is doing a hundred thousand ton at the Reinhardt pit. We are looking to add ten percent of natural rock to that this time as well to try to I guess beef up the, the quality a little bit from what it was in the past. I believe that it is going to better gravel than we had last time as well, but we do have a very small amount sitting there yet, but this would be something they would move in this spring to produce.
So this, this price includes a ten percent?
This price includes a ten percent.
And we're using native rock instead of limestone?
Yes. They're hauling in from this Riesel Burger. I'm exactly sure the site where it is, but they're, they, it's their rock, the contractors, and they're hauling them, and so it's, this price is for it to basically got rock to be hauled there and processed along with the gravel. Keeping it uniformly mixed.
So is there a size on that?
They'll, they'll run it through the crusher and crush it down to the same size as the ground.
So it's bigger stuff?
It, it's a little bit bigger. It's anywhere from half inch to two inches probably is my guess. I don't quote me on this exact size, but some, some of it is bigger. They'll run it through the processor and if it's, if it can run through, it will. If not, it will be crushed just like the oversized rock that will come out of the pit. You, you can't see the, the blood, what you had in as much as what you, when you had limestone, but I think it lasts longer. I think that natural rock has a little, little more life expectancy on the raw lime rock.
That'd be great.
I believe it's four ninety-nine a ton. But that was without any rock in. The act, most of that increases the rock. I think that it only went up six cents maybe on the gravel itself.
So the added.
And this is still probably trying to thirty, thirty to forty cents less than we paid for the stuff up at Kate's. This is closer. And it's a year, about a year later.
And this.
It should make pretty good bars, pretty, pretty good quality gravel.
What was that quoted in?
Six twenty-one.
Six twenty-one.
Yeah, it's fifty.
Some rate percentage of you.
A hundred thousand. And again, this is, this is gravel that more than likely we won't put on the road this year. We're, we're trying to stay ahead of the game.
The money's already in the bucket.
Yep, just trying to stay ahead of things and I don't think the cost of producing gravel is going to get any cheaper either. Yeah.
No, I guess I keep getting this stuff to load. I keep getting Courtney's trying to load. I looked at it yesterday.
Any more questions? Entertaining a motion?
I make a motion that we go ahead with the gravel contract for a hundred thousand, turning at six dollars and twenty-one cents. I'll say that motion.
Just been a second. A motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Is this Reinhardt or really the recent? It's a Reinhardt, it's a Reinhardt pit.
Riesel Burgers bring in the gravel, that's ten percent. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
They, they own it or they have rights to that pit and it's their, it's their rock. You want one for sure. I know that much. Last thing I had on my list is I had received a quote for a new motor grader. This is for fiscal year twenty-three funds. This will be trading, training in. It's one of our H motor graders. The, the sales price on the motor grader obviously has gone up significantly since the last time we purchased one a couple of years ago, but I don't think that's I think that's pretty much the industry standard at this point with where things are at. It's not some, the bigger deal is the availability. They're telling me that we're twelve to fourteen months out for delivery. So we're, we're going to be towards the end of fiscal year twenty-three before we receive this.
So what, what kind of model are you buying? So does it say?
Um, I should, it's another sheet. It's a one.
Forty-eight.
Well, the one forty.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I was just gonna write down.
It's that one forty J O Y dash P R. It's a, it's still a one forty. It's the same, same size as what we purchased. It's, it's actually an identical to the machine that we purchased two years ago. They haven't changed anything.
Call it one forty joy dash M R.
Correct. So how they come up with that, I do not know.
Refresh my memory. Why did we buy one last year?
We didn't have, we didn't, we didn't have a motor grader in the, in the budget last year since we had bought two the previous year. We're trying to get trucks and grade all and different things, and the, the truck thing is a whole nother, another animal that we're trying to work out as well, but.
Is there any more information on trucks?
A, a little bit. I think we can go out and finally get quotes now and we send in specs out shortly.
And get some type of expected delivery date.
Some type of expected delivery date. It's a I don't know if, it could be is, is within twelve to fourteen months or it could be eighteen to twenty-four months. I, that I'll find out more when I get those numbers back or I'm hoping, because I'm going to have that part of it of what would the estimated delivery date be? Because it also matters on, I'm talking about fiscal year twenty-three or are we talking about fiscal year twenty-four? Because it's crazy to think we're trying to look that far out, but that's, that's the game we're playing now.
You know, we've had a conversation about it and I, I if we could get two trucks and a road grader in that fiscal year, I think I'd be happy. But if we can't, I still think that maybe waiting and going for four trucks later that might be a, a better avenue.
And now we talked about that too, did, you know, that problems that we throw a load on the shop.
I know, I know. It's not just, it's not just the budget there. If you look at.
We'll have to see, number one, see if the numbers coming in on trucks when we get those quotes and see where, which vendor and depending which vendor, what the availability is and when they were to come in. At that point, you know, even if we end up getting four in a fiscal year and the, the following fiscal year, it doesn't mean that two could come sooner and two could come later if that's what we're doing. So at this point, I guess we just got to get a quote on two of them and see where we fall and then at least that's my, my game, game plan. And then if we, if we're not going to be able to get it, then what are we gonna, what can we do to fill out the rest of this year? So we're not sticking too much dollars in the fiscal year or S is to fill out fiscal year twenty-three, so we're not sticking too much in the fiscal.
Wouldn't be favorable to the quotes if we decided in sentence we would like to do four instead of two.
I don't think so because I think availability is almost going to be more of a problem. To some extent, they might be better off start off with two now. If you try to get four, you might have to wait longer, you know, in the price line, I think. Maybe in history that would, that would maybe help you a little bit, but now because of the, the short supply and that what the demand is, it's not really about that quantity anymore.
Same with the road graders I consented to.
Right.
I think the thing is too is your sum is place, they'll give you a quote, but they're also on the clause of any additional.
I did check into that on this one, on the quote that we received. This will be the price we pay.
I think there was a difference too between private sector and government sector purchasing because obviously we got quite a bit better purchasing power as a government entity.
Can you recall what the price was on the last one?
I believe it was three hundred and thirty-five, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, but that also didn't have, I don't think we, I think we reused the equipment on that one. So I think there was about twelve to fifteen, fifteen thousand dollars less on that quote. So it would have been like three fifty roughly compared to three ninety now. That's, that's my recollection there.
Would have been worse.
I, I mean, it's, it's not good, but it's not horrible. And we are getting more for our trade, about roughly eight thousand dollars more for our trade than what we did last time as well, and it's the same model.
That's probably because of the use value of that also.
Right.
Yeah, I would have liked to thought it go up higher. You used it as a, actually I was going to do it for a while. That was in non-mobile side, but yeah.
I think it is a higher powered machine. It's got over fourteen thousand dollars on it, so I'm going to let's get up there, but.
What, what year is the next one you would be trading? What year, can you recall what that would be?
Um.
This one's two thousand and four.
It would be in that same vintage. It'd be a two thousand and four or five. We have three ages left right now, and they're all on that same, that same, within that two-year span in there. And.
Can they be looking to do in this win?
Either next year or possibly even yet this year, if the truck thing wouldn't fall, would fall through, maybe looking to get another one, try to stay, stay ahead of it, but.
Did you look any more into that company or it's not company, but that field day, training day, having people come?
Um, not lately. I haven't. I know they were kind of shut down on that with COVID for a while, and I, I haven't looked into see if they started that back up again or not yet. I sure can.
There's no more questions. I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. More greater quote for a new grader. I just lost it. Do you have a?
Something joy.
One forty dash joy dash M R.
That was total, we traded three hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Then a motion is, then a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have for today.
Zach, turn it up for a gun ready, Danny.
Uh, they, they started, they started doing some miscellaneous work last week. They're, they have to wait for a demolition timeline for the D N R, and that was today. With the weather that we had, I think they're probably not coming until the middle of the week, but they, they will start to turn up this week. With, with having a free winter work, that didn't obviously reflected in the bid price that we got, but also, but also allows them to not feel quite so bad about not being there if it's a crappy day. That's the kind of.
They didn't also give a bypass for that?
I don't know if they have it in yet, but it, but they're, we're gonna, we are gonna have a, a run around for head use and contract as far as that goes.
Zach, Zine and I had a chance to listen to a presentation and I may get together as we would all. R and G is going to start moving. They've got some developments towards B ten. So totally renewable fuel and the city of beans is doing, is using that product right now. And we've kind of got a side offer that maybe the city name is doing total renewable, and we got a side offer by going over and visiting that. And I thought we might snag you two and go over and take a peek at it. As we get closer to this fuel depot, it might be very advantageous for the school, us, the city to all make a move to total renewables. They act like they're, the information now is this come one side and it's actually a very good product. You get a little bit less mileage out of it, but you're also picking up a little less wear and tear on the ingredients, which extends your life. So there's a little bit with the bad. So I, so if we get a little, hear more about it, we may take it in time and just go over and yep, listen to the presentation before we.
I do, Dave, when Zach's not around, we kind of talk about a little bit. I think you say that the aim, so instead of B ten, they were using a hundred percent?
I, I, I wanted to say they called it B eighty, but I can't remember, but I, it, it's classified as total renewable. That also takes you off the hazardous material list being on there too, which is a benefit a little bit to your insurance of taking away that many gallons away from your insurance policy. So there's some pluses. Like you said, this was a one-sided conversation. I, I want to.
I'd be curious what the, the cold weather part of that is, because I, that's what in the past, and maybe it's better than this.
They kind of dressed that.
He addressed that.
All good different than twenty years ago.
Yeah. They didn't have an issue. Yeah, that's what had been an issue with the biodiesel is that, is the cold weather. So we go over and listen to them anyway.
Absolutely.
The thing is, like we also brought up, is if we do redo our state of fuel people, we thought it would be nice to state that too.
It could be state money to help with that. Especially if we add three entities, so that could really increase your value.
Sounds good. Definitely worth looking into.
And we're in the middle of a agricultural area, why we wouldn't look hard at it.
All right. Second item on the agenda is C D B G Down payment assistance program, excuse me. First thing we need to approve is a sub recipient contract. Read through this. I don't see too much that stood out. I did say that we, the county has been awarded the grant from the I E D A in the amount of two hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred dollars. So that's good. I think this program's been going very well.
Been pretty beneficial to some of the smaller areas where they can't get some of the minimums that are required. It's easy to see those account. I'd make the motion that we approve this sub recipient account, right?
I will second that.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Part B to that is to approve the technical assistance contract. Read through this. Basically, it's stating that C O G, the cog, is going to be overseeing these and will perform in a satisfactory and proper manner, manner determining by the county, determined by the county.
I'll make a motion to approve the technical assistance contract.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, third item on the agenda is to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash zero zero two to approve the I S A group benefit twenty-eight E. Agreement?
We just use a little bit of this program, right?
Yeah, we have the voluntary accidental death and dismemberment. Looks like they're setting up a new entity. They'll have a new tax ID.
I see no problem. I'll make a motion that we approve these. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash oh oh two, prove the I S A group benefit twenty-eight E agreement.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, roll call.
Austin?
Yes.
Rubbles?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Miners?
Yes.
Shetler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There's three places to sign here. This, this is the last page.
Right, or is it just?
What's that?
Just me or everybody?
Yeah, just a place for the chair.
All right, fourth item is to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero zero three, City of Arcata, Arcadia incremental tax, property tax revenues. And John Warden did take a look at this, correct?
Um, no.
Oh, this is kind of standard.
This is pretty standard. We have a lot of smaller communities that have urban renewal areas, Templeton's one, Liden, Arcadia. Here. So this, this is just approving them doing this. But assuming that the school would be another one that gets a reservation, it's anybody that's affected tax-wise by them doing this.
Okay, but you know, does that include everybody that's listed as a taxing authority on the tax statement?
Yeah.
Extension service, do they all get penalized a piece of this and?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they do. In order to collect incremental property tax revenue for more than eleven years, the city must consent of any affected county. Oh, yeah, yeah, they do. In order to collect incremental property tax revenue for more than eleven years, the city must consent of any affected county and school district to extend the collection an additional five years for some of the sixteen years. So I think the reason they're doing this is because of the time that they're going to be collecting. Um, obviously
I think they want to notify the county.
It's the two largest taxes.
And you know what, they may also be there.
Yeah, I would say probably they do.
So has this been all been approved by the city?
I don't know if it has, I thought, I believe it was gonna be brought to their, brought to their council, but I, I do, I did not hear whether it officially did, and whether it got through. I'm assuming it did, but I, I don't know that.
Well, I will, I will tell you that I, I will be abstaining from this because of some relationships which involve people that are doing this project.
And it could have been even tonight, hopefully consummating the first Monday.
Hate to get ahead of them.
Well, I think we have, I think they have to do this step before they can
Before they can do the next step?
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with
Cause they're bonding attorneys.
Just send it to us. I don't want to get the card in front of the horse here.
Who's the bonding attorney?
Um, it is Amy York, senior attorney with Dorsey and Williams.
Cause I know it is Bob Josh. Bob.
What? He did?
I just not a thought of
Oh, I didn't know that.
I had his funeral last Wednesday.
Oh.
I did not know that.
Neither.
I was shocked when you said that. They died in twenty seventeen, February.
Retired.
Yeah. He was a smart man.
So, I mean, obviously when you have these types of projects, you don't see reap the benefits on the tax roll right away, but in the future you will. Economic development, in my opinion.
Well, I have no problem with this. Um, like I said, I'll put it on in front of the card, so I'll make the motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-two oh three for the city of Arcadia incremental property tax revenue. I'll second that motion.
Right, there's been a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, roll call.
Austin?
Yes.
Rebels?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Miners?
Which thing?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number five, if somebody wants to start their committee reports.
Yeah, I can go first. Uh, last Tuesday, CADC meeting, we had a presentation on REG. It's also the day that they made the announcement that, uh, they were purchased by Chevron. Made a note when they stepped in the meeting and it sounded like they were there. So, uh, that was a very educational meeting about biodiesel, I mean, and those I think it's something that, like I said, I think it's something you should look at and put underneath the Microsoft. Uh, then on the third, uh, attended the farm meeting in the evening. Went well, a lot of questions and answers session. I did have a cancellation on meetings last week, and I'll cover in the upcoming week. Uh, I will be going to ISAC on Wednesday through Friday. I will not be making it to the capital that day, uh, and I also will have a mental health meeting while I'm there, so. I have a couple of words.
Last week, I had city council meeting in Carroll, Monday night, Thursday night, I attended the county farm bureau meeting with Rich and Jean. And this week they have recycled, or I'm, I'm still farm warning.
Okay, last week, uh, I was at the CDC meeting, also was Rich that, uh, Reg did a presentation, and I agree, I think it was a very interesting presentation. And then on Thursday night, I was also attending the farm bureau meeting, I thought, I was kind of surprised, uh, the amount of time we spent there, they had a lot of questions, we kind of went through the budget with them. I think it was very well received, at least they had very complaints on the budget. So, and then this week I have, uh, will be attending at ISAC, and I also will not be going to the county, that's the capital day, so I will be attending ISAC.
I can go next, um, on the twenty-second. I go back two weeks here.
Some little glitch.
Um, we
Probably proved.
The, uh, board of health chairman and myself met with, uh, by Zoom to with John Stevens about the, um, community need, community health needs assessment. Getting that ball rolling. Then on the twenty-third, had a region called Hazmat meeting at nine o'clock in the morning up in Fort Dodge. Um, it was basically their reorganization meeting, uh, the LEPC meeting, um, accepted, uh, resignations from Dennis Moreland, who's been there since the beginning of that whole uh, region by Hazmat material to meet, uh, so he's been on since, I think ninety-two, if I'm not mistaken. There were, there were nominations for replacements, Dean Kruger from Humboldt County, and then Jack Williams from Green County. Um, there was the election of the LEPC vice chair. Uh, Scott Forbes, who was the vice chair, will now also be the vice chair going forward. Uh, the chairman, uh, position will be, um, filled next year, so they have it every year, the chairman one year and the vice chair the next year. It is Scott Jacobs and myself, and then the, um, representatives from the sheriff or from the fire department up there, uh, are suggested that we start a strategic planning meeting. Uh, it's been a while since we've had one of these, in fact, I don't think I've ever been involved in any of them since I've been out there. So that will probably commence. Immediately after that, we had the the, uh, LEPC commission meeting, um, and there again, Dennis Moreland and Jack Williams resigned from that, uh, from those positions and were replaced, was also the election of the chair and then and the vice chair of the, uh, commission. Uh, Scott Jacobs was made, was appointed, was nominated as chair, and myself was a point, was nominated as, in order to continue with, um, the commission as vice chair. As far as incidents, there were six incidents since November twenty-sixth. I don't know if they ever went to, I don't think they went to any of them except for one at Ampride where there was an anhydrous leak in the, in the bottom valve, the belly valve of a, uh, semi. They suggested that they could not, they could not stop the leak in the valve, so they suggested they just take it out of the country and let it expand itself and, um, and then repair it after it's empty. Um, otherwise, there really wasn't much, uh, anhydrous leak in the Litten, no response was needed. On January first, there was a, uh, an oil situation, nobody, nobody knew how this oil got there in this ditch in Humboldt County. And somebody came in and, uh, one of, one of the, uh, fire, fire, somebody from the fire department there came in and got rolls of absorbent pads and two absorbent booms to clean up the, uh, the leak. Um, there was a diesel tank fell off the back of a truck, I'm assuming it was a pickup truck in, in Fort Dodge. The tank was positioned so that it would no longer leak, so I suppose they just turned it up on its side. Um, no response was needed here as well, and, um, the, whoever was involved in this offloaded it into a drop. The drop's any safer than the tank. Everything pretty much has stayed the same there, you know, I mean, we're still, still saying it's paying at a dollar fifty, I don't think that's gonna change for a while. I think they've been doing some pretty good things, uh, they did get, they did purchase, uh, uh, some Gemini equipment to detect hazardous materials. This is a ninety-one thousand dollar, uh, piece of equipment um, that they've been using since, since, uh, the LEPC, LEPC started, and they got a grant to cover that expense, so. That was it for the LEPC, and then that evening at a uh, joint, uh, nine-one-one service board and EMA meeting, commission meeting. This was the budget hearing for, uh, for both departments. And, uh, the budget went very well, I mean, I don't think there's any, ever any issues with, with their budgets at all. Uh, they continue to, uh, get good dollars, uh, from uh, surcharges. This continues to get good, good dollars from service charges. Plan lines can continue to decrease. We still get seventy-eight thousand dollars from them, and the wireless lines, they get hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, so one's going up and one's going down, which is only logical. Both budgets look good, and both budgets were approved. I've got more information on that if anybody has any questions about their budgets. They also approved the extension of the GeoCon mapping contract, and they use that for locating with GeoCon, I think, um, Zach, don't they have that, the, the GeoCon mapping, I think that is very detailed uh, information as far as, uh, locations. Gives house numbers and the whole gun, the whole yard, I think that's, that's been in, in service for years. This contract will begin on, uh, June two thousand twenty-three and will go through two thousand twenty-six. Then there were, then there's the, um, I, I am responding, I, Iowa R response, do you know about that? It's the, um, it's their, uh, first responder, uh, contract they have with this, this, the way it looks to me, this company will put an app on, any firefighters phone. When they get a call, they can bring up the information, and will tell them exactly where the fire is at. It gives them a lot of really good information as far as, you know, how big the fire is, whether they need mutual aid, um, what kind of trucks they need, whether they need tankers or, or whatever. So it, it's, uh, it's a pretty good deal, and those that were there, uh, spoke highly of it, uh, so it's a, it's a good thing, it's it's probably a lifesaver, I think, in, uh, at times.
Something new, I mean, I'm, I'm
Yeah, well, it's probably, it's an app, so it's probably, yeah. Anyway, the, uh, they, they, uh, approved the extension of that um, until, uh, April thirtieth, uh, two thousand twenty-seven, total cost of that, it is, uh, twenty-four thousand four hundred and ten dollars in that timeframe, and, um, and that's, uh, four hundred, four thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars a year. Um, then we had the, the budget work session, uh, on the twenty-fifth that I attended via Zoom, and I think we got a lot accomplished there, and good, moving forward with a good budget. I just had a question of, of Courtney, uh, of during the meeting about, uh, mileage rates. Mileage rate went up two cents December twenty-seventh, or December seventeenth, and you adjust for that every year.
We, we adjusted as of the first.
Is that fifty-one then?
We follow the Fed.
Well, we do what, eighty-five percent of that?
Yeah, it's, I don't even know if it's eighty-five exactly, but used to be, we just did what the federal did in many years ago, it was custom discussion.
Custom discussion.
Eighty-some percent.
We, we know, we just went through this at the mental health, as they were talking about, and I was just shocked, it's a wide spectrum out there, what people do, it's all over the board.
Ours, even though we don't get the federal rate, ours is still a higher rate than I think even the state offers theirs and some of the other counties, so it seems pretty fair.
I think the federal rate's fifty-eight and a half cents.
Well, they, they adjust on every quarter, right?
Yeah, we, we look at it every year, so, but if you guys notice something, when it's, it goes up to sixty-some cents.
Well, I mean, um, you can see this thing probably jump about six.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I brought it up.
Cause we don't have to
With the fuel prices going up, are you sure that?
We don't have to only adjust it once a year, we just kind of use, that's just the way
The thing, the thing is, you gotta remember, if you pay more than that, then you gotta write it that'd be true for the employee, or whoever, or the mom over.
More than what?
Over the federal rate.
Over the federal rate.
Yeah.
Well, we've like stated
Like a fringe benefit.
Yeah.
This week, I they haven't determined, but they're considering having a board of health meeting. I don't know if that's been determined yet. Um, and then I'm, I'll be attending ISAC on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
All right, I'll go next, I have two weeks to back up on. I attended the Access Washington trip with Jean with the CADC, and then had an ally leadership Iowa meeting, and it was actually in Coon Rapids, what was me, so we got to see the Main Street Coon, and then also White Rock Conservatory was a part of that. Lot of really neat things going down in Coon, I really liked their, um, folders that they put together, shows you all the different attractions and things you can do while you're in Coon Rapids. Then I attended a budget meeting, and also an SCH HVAC replacement and improvement meeting, uh, it was on the twenty-fifth. This upcoming week, I have the newspaper and radio, and we're going to tour the jail here in a little bit. And then I will be doing the day at the Capitol on Wednesday, and then the ISAC spring conference Thursday and Friday. And that is it. So the sixth item on our agenda is the board to tour the jail facility. Do we want to close down the meeting or keep the meeting running?
We'll just close it down. They will, they'll follow us. I'll make the motion for your
There's been a motion and a second, second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Courtney, this is the hard ball.